All right. A proclamation. Whereas the Hayes County Food Bank represents a countywide effort to provide nutritious food to the food insecure in the San Marcos area, made possible by the generous contributions of individuals, civic organizations, local government, and businesses. And whereas households with children are more likely to experience food insecurity, and many of these households do not qualify for federal nutrition programs, such as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and visit their local food banks and other food programs for extra support. And whereas in 2023, the Hayes County Food Bank and its partners served on average each week 3,400 low-income individuals and those facing a food emergency, distributing more than 1.3 million pounds of food to these households in need. And whereas a majority of all Hayes County Food Bank clients in 2023 consisted of San Marcos residents, an additional 60% of total partner nonprofits served were based in San Marcos, including church, school, and shelter food pantries, and the Unsheltered Outreach Program. And whereas a $30 donation can provide 10 meals through the buying power of the food bank. And whereas National Hunger Action Month is a Feeding America effort to raise awareness about the hunger epidemic in the United States and to encourage individuals to take action in some form against hunger. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim September of 2024 as Hunger Action Month in San Marcos, and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to pledge to take action against hunger in our community, whether it be by fund or food donation, volunteering, or advocacy. Thank you for what you do for our community. Having served on the food bank board for eight years, chair for two, I know how much y'all do with a small space and very few people. So thank you so very much.
Come on up. She's gonna take our pictures. Okay. Go ahead. Will we take a picture?
Okay. All right. Well, first of all, I want to say if I am hit by a car in the parking lot, I would like this outfit to be Exhibit A. You didn't see this because I could not be more in orange. I guess I could get some orange pants. But that's, uh, we are proudly wearing the orange for September, as she said, Hunger Action Month. We call upon you to donate, to volunteer, and to advocate. And you can advocate by going to feedingamerica.org, and there's lots of very easy-to-use templates to contact your federal representatives, to get a strong farm bill so that we can go forward with all the things that you know, not just the food bank, but people, the farm bill also includes free and reduced lunch for our kids, and TFAP, which is the Emergency Food Program that we operate under, as well as SNAP, which used to be food stamps. So all of those things are necessary for us to have a well-nourished community. One thing that we're doing, and you can do too, is stack the mac. We picked the oranges food we could think of to collect during the month of September, and it's macaroni and cheese. So already the stack is taller than me, but it's not taller than Tori yet, right? So we gotta keep going. Tori's six foot four. I'm five foot four, so that's where we are. You can get a flyer from us. We can, we have it on our website, our email, or just put out a box. You can tack the flyer to it and just collect macaroni and cheese for the month of September, and we're gonna see how tall of a macaroni tower we have going into the following months. This is gonna be a fun one, and it's a great level for everyone who's calling us wanting to know what can my Girl Scouts do, what can my football team do? Anyone can do this. It's pretty easy. And for me, it's a great entry point into philanthropy for children because you can bring a child to the store, they can pick out the macaroni, and you can have a family discussion about why we take care of our neighbors this way. I've been so grateful for this community and how well we do take care of our neighbors, and how much the community, both at the government level and at the individual level, responds to the food need in this area. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Linda?
Come on up. We'll make room. Tall people in the back. Okay, we've got everybody here now. All right, this is wonderful. And you're going to learn a lot about Bill Hudson through this proclamation. Whereas William Bill Richard Hudson was born on September 6th, 1936, at the family's shotgun house at 733 Center Street, across from what was called the Colored School, where the Dunbar Community Center is now. And whereas the land upon which the house was built had been purchased in 1887 by Hudson's paternal grandmother, Ellen Norwood Hudson, and the house was built by his grandfather, Richard Hudson. And whereas Ellen Richard's son Floyd Wayman Hudson married Maddie Lee Edwards, and they raised their four children, Floyd Junior, Ellen, Bill, and Clarence, at the 733 Center Street House. And whereas Floyd Hudson Senior, a jack-of-all-trades, community leader, and popular citywide musician, passed away in 1952. Maddie Lee struggled to support the family as a custodian at Southwest Texas State Teachers' College, and she passed away in 1962 after three years of illness. And whereas following the death of their mother, the three younger children were abruptly removed to live with their aunts in San Antonio. Bill, then 15, graduated from high school in 1954, and the following day joined the U.S. Air Force, where he was trained as a radar technician. When honorably discharged from the Air Force, Bill was unable to get a job with his radar technician skills because of his race. And whereas Bill settled in San Francisco, living with one of his uncles. Working part-time jobs, he took classes to successfully redefine himself as an artist, painting and selling his work. He then began his cross-country and worldwide travels while evolving his own unique artistic style. And whereas in 1973, Hudson returned to Texas with a dream and design to transform the family land into a neighborhood art park in memory of his parents. His proposal to the City Planning Commission was not accepted, but he did not give up his dream, and over ensuing decades, attempted to resolve the heir property legal issues to a clear title to the land. And whereas Hudson's success as an artist resulted in many honors, fellowships, teaching positions, exhibitions, and sales around the world. In 1989, he accepted a one-year visiting artist contract at Franklin &amp; Marshall College in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. This turned into a permanent position, and for more than a decade after retirement, he was honored as the Jenny Brown and Betsy Heskock Distinguished Artist-in-Residence and Associate Professor Emeritus. And whereas in 2022, six San Marcos Ortsa organizations collaborated to create a citywide exhibit of Hudson's artwork in his honor. His work had never been shown before in Texas. Bill could not attend due to ill health, but was surprised and honored at this homecoming event and participated through an online interview. And whereas in 1997, Mrs. Johnny Armstead, a classmate of the Hudson's at the Colored School, founded the Calaboose African-American History Museum with the mission to collect, preserve, and interpret the history of African-Americans in San Marcos and Hayes County. And whereas Bill Hudson passed away on September 21st, 2022. And whereas early this summer, 2024, his estate was finally able to get a clear title, and he gifted the land to the Calaboose Museum. We celebrate and are grateful for this gift and look forward to realizing the memorial bill plan for his parents and the community. And whereas we're also proud that some of Hudson's artworks that he completed during his many years in France will be included in the Paris Noir exhibit in the spring of 2025. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the third day of September 2024 as William Bill Hudson Day, and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to recognize the significance Bill Hudson played in the building of the Calaboose African-American History Museum, and also his art that he contributed to the world. So thank you all. Yes, applause. Hold on. Thank you all for what you do for the arts. Thank you for this recognition for Mr. Hudson, and thank you to those of you who did the 2022 efforts, which was fabulous, because I attended the interview, and it was wonderful.
Thank you, Jane, very much. I'm sorry that's so long. His story was a lot longer than that. Very hard to put in a small document. But I want to introduce Colette and Mark. I'm gonna see if I can get this right. Kathy?
Tracy.
Tracy.
Tracy. Okay. And one other. Where's the other one? Sylvia, over there. Those are all relatives of Bill's. Sylvia lives in Houston.
No.
No?
Kathy.
Kathy lives in Houston.
The rest of us in San Antonio.
The rest are in San Antonio. I'm sorry. Anyway, they came today, and we're so honored to have them here. They have been very helpful in helping us get the property for the Calaboose so we can help bring about Bill's dream. And Jane mentioned in here, in the proclamation, that he came here in 1973, and anything I could possibly write about Bill has already been written by somebody most of you, if not all of you, know is Melissa Milicum. And she does not, sadly does not remember writing these. But it's so well-written that I can't, I can't hardly do any better. So there were a couple of parts that she got by meeting Bill. I never got a chance to meet him. Back in 1973, when he came to try to get that dream started about the property. Can you read just a very short thing, a couple of things that were quotes from him?
You bet. So Bill Hudson's dream is a sculpture that would involve the whole setting of the old family property on Center Street. At the center would be a tower made of concrete, glass, and colored tiles. The tower would be surrounded by a garden and benches open to the public as a resting place, he says. We left under tragic circumstances, he says softly. I feel strange coming back with the house gone and the property overgrown. I feel nostalgia and sadness, and I want to answer that feeling. That's why it's important for me to do this project. That was 51 years ago, unfortunately, and it didn't get to happen yet. But I will say that angels, angels are the messengers of hope. So Bill Hudson is the messenger of hope for this project.
And thank you to the family members who are here, who are here today with us. We appreciate it, and we're so glad that you're here to help us celebrate. So thank you.
Melissa, can we get you to come down to the lower level, please? Can you step down, Melissa? And I've got ladies in the back that gotta kinda hide behind Diane there. We'll get everybody to...
I don't want your attention.
Just kinda slide over where you can see me and make sure that... Trey, can you go this way, Marcus?
Want me to go up?
I think we've got everybody just about where they can see me here. There we go. Can y'all see me?
Yes.
There we go. Big smiles for you. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. I'll take a few more of these. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. That should do it. Thank y'all very much.
I'm supposed to read this again on that Saturday, right? The day of the walk? Am I supposed to read this again the day of the walk? I didn't even say that. I'll make it work. Okay. All right. Our next proclamation is another important one about our heritage and history. Whereas the recorded Hispanic heritage has been part of the DNA of American culture for over 480 years, with undeniable influence in education, public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and governance. And whereas in the word of Cesar Chavez, preservation of one's own culture does not require the contempt or disrespect for other cultures, and thus celebrate the contributions of the robust Hispanic diaspora that includes Argentina, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Cuba, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, Nicaragua, Panama, Paraguay, Peru, Puerto Rico, Uruguay, and Venezuela. And whereas community members of the city of San Marcos are proud of their Mexican heritage that includes Native American and Spanish blood, identifying themselves as Mexican-American, Chicano, Latino, Spanish, Tejano, or Hispanic. And there are other Latin American countries whose people have become part of the colorful fabric which has been added to the Texas culture that is sometimes impossible to separate from Tex-Mex. And whereas humanity and centuries of hope and sacrifice have brought us to commemorate the strong and visible roots of Hispanic heritage, which has contributed to the infrastructure in farming, business, science, and the performing arts in the national, regional, and local landscape of our nation. And whereas the city of San Marcos encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. And whereas all communities in San Marcos are invited to join in unity to celebrate our diverse cultures by participating in the Third Annual Hispanic Heritage Exhibition Walk, and whereas the annual Hispanic Heritage Exhibition Walk serves as a kickoff event for Hispanic Heritage Month. Therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th of 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month, and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to recognize the positive impacts of the city's Hispanic people to the whole of the city's population. Thank y'all for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for having the third. We're up to the third Heritage Walk in celebration. I've been. It is a wonderful celebration, especially when you ask folks, where are you from? And where are your, where are your people from? So anyway, it's a, it's a great event.
Yeah, I can. Thank you to everybody in here and out there and watching. Like she mentioned, on September 14th, we're gonna have at the Courthouse lawn, our Third Annual Celebration. There's gonna be stuff for the kids, music, I mean, food, kinda all over. And it's just, it's an opportunity for us to get together, build community, and celebrate a history that is so rich and that we all enjoy in various ways. So I appreciate the honor and appreciate all the work that they do as well.
Someone to hold this, and we'll take the pictures. Thank you, and I'll see you on the 14th.
Nine-one-one and Preparedness Month. Thank y'all. See you later.
Rob will do you first.
You're lost now. Exactly.
Preparedness. Another important proclamation. Whereas Preparedness is a national priority with the goal of shared safety and resilience. And whereas the state of Texas historically leads the nation in the number of federally declared disasters, be they natural hazards, technological, or human-caused. And whereas Emergency Preparedness Month is an opportunity for the city of San Marcos to inform and educate the residents, businesses, schools, and communities in the city to be more prepared by developing the capabilities needed to prevent, protect against, respond to, recover from, and mitigate against all threats and hazards. And whereas Preparedness is a responsibility of every resident of San Marcos, and residents are encouraged to take intentional precautionary measures to ensure the resilience of their families, homes, community, and businesses. And whereas Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to reiterate our gratitude for the selfless service of the brave men and women who help prepare our city for disasters and take action when they strike. Our first responders, critical infrastructure, and other frontline workers, and disaster response volunteers often take great personal risks to perform their duties. These individuals personally and collectively are essential to the security of our city, and we remain committed to supporting them in their mission. And whereas personal, business, animal, and private sector Preparedness may serve to mitigate the impacts of various incidents, emergencies, and disasters in the city. And whereas promoting a culture of resilience through Preparedness helps enable communities and individuals to take the preparatory actions necessary to overcome the threats and hazards that present themselves. And whereas during Emergency Preparedness Month, I encourage all of the people of San Marcos to adopt a proactive mindset and take the necessary steps to prepare their families and communities to withstand and recover from unexpected events. We cannot always know when the next crisis will occur, but we can know that we'll be prepared by committing ourselves to a culture of resilience. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 24th as Emergency Preparedness Month, and do hereby call upon all the people of San Marcos to take action to be prepared for a disaster or an emergency by encouraging all residents, businesses, schools, and communities to develop Emergency Preparedness and Resiliency plans and to register at warncentraltexas.org to receive emergency alerts. Thank y'all for what you do and helping us get prepared so that we can maybe lessen the impact when all the bad stuff happens.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the Preparedness Month for September, we're gonna be focusing on a specific message for each week of the month. The first is for the Warren Central Texas signup, reminding folks to sign up for emergency alerts for their area. And the newly activated outdoor warning sirens that have been undergoing repairs and are up and running. The others are how to build a disaster plan for your family, how to build a kit, an emergency kit, and how to prepare your home for disasters. The information will be coming out on social media, including the city's City Hall Facebook page, as well as in a mailer with utility billing for folks to, to read. Also, on September 14th, the Preparedness Fair is being held at the Kyle Performing Arts Center. Please come. They raffle off actual stuff that you can use during disasters. You donate some money, buy some tickets. And also, you can also get some free literature from various organizations that we represented there. And of course, most importantly, they do have a chili cook-off. So please make an effort to come and enjoy. Thank you.
I'm gonna get a couple to here. One, two, three. Can you add hair? I don't need that.
Not like it's an election year. But I want to thank you very much for your support for Mercy Preparedness, and also for the support so we can get the towers back up and running. Through your leadership, we got it done, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I say this every year, and I'm gonna say it again in case somebody has missed it. Warren Central Texas, if you sign up, it's not just for you. If grandma lives in a flood-prone area, you can put grandma's address in also. So even if you live across town, if something's happening, the water's rising over there, you will get the notification. So that's incredibly important if you've got friends, family, et cetera, in areas that you need to watch, you can do that by registering at Warren Central Texas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right. Another important proclamation today. Whereas the United States of America suffered the worst terrorist attack in our nation's history on Tuesday, September 11th of 2001, with the hijacking and destruction of four passenger airplanes, the devastation of the World Trade Center in New York City, and the attack on the Pentagon in Washington, DC. And whereas these vicious attacks claimed the lives of nearly 3,000 innocent people, wounded the heart and soul of Americans, threatened the security of our country, and endangered the economic stability of nations around the world. And whereas Americans and people throughout the world have responded to the events of September 11th with a commitment to protect our freedoms and the will to seek justice and the resolve to fight terrorism wherever it exists in the world. And whereas 23 years after the catastrophe, our nation commemorates the heroes and the innocence of this attack on our nation, rededicating ourselves to the principles of freedom and democracy that are the foundation of our nation. And whereas the city of San Marcos will hold a brief remembrance on this day...
emergency preparedness, and also for the support so we can get the towers back up and running through your leadership. We got it done, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I say this every year, and I'm gonna say it again in case somebody has missed it. Warren Central Texas, if you sign up, it's not just for you. If Grandma lives in a flood-prone area, you can put Grandma's address in also. So even if you live across town, if something's happening, the water's rising over there, you will get the notification. So that's incredibly important if you've got friends, family, et cetera, in areas that you need to watch, you can do that by registering at Warren Central Texas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right. Nine-eleven. I haven't forgotten y'all.
Is your day. Community needs to see you. He wouldn't get up for real, I see. Oh, you're not as persuasive as I am. Because look what I did.
My boss touched me on the shoulder, so...
There you go.
You need to do all the talking.
All right. Another important proclamation today. Whereas the United States of America suffered the worst terrorist attack in our nation's history on Tuesday, September 11th of 2001, with the hijacking and destruction of four passenger airplanes, the devastation of the World Trade Center in New York City, and the attack on the Pentagon in Washington, DC. And whereas these vicious attacks claimed the lives of nearly 3,000 innocent people, wounded the heart and soul of Americans, threatened the security of our country, and endangered the economic stability of nations around the world. And whereas Americans and people throughout the world have responded to the events of September 11th with a commitment to protect our freedoms, and the will to seek justice, and the resolve to fight terrorism wherever it exists in the world. And whereas 23 years after the catastrophe, our nation commemorates the heroes and the innocence of this attack on our nation, rededicating ourselves to the principles of freedom and democracy that are the foundation of our nation. And whereas the City of San Marcos will hold a brief remembrance on this day to honor the memories of the heroic civilians, firefighters, EMS personnel, and police officers who died on September 11th of 2001. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024, as 9/11 Remembrance Day in San Marcos, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to remember those lost on September 11th of 2001, and to rededicate ourselves as patriotic Americans by flying the flag of the United States of America and reaffirming our commitment to liberty and justice. Thank y'all for continuing to hold this event and to commemorate something that was tragic in our history with something that we need to remember. So thank you for doing this every year.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. There are fewer and fewer events like this around the country as the years pass by, so I want to thank you, City Managers Office, and the Council for continuing to support our efforts to do this, this next Wednesday here at City Hall at 8:40. Stacy Royg has been coordinating this for us for the last several weeks, and this year we want to pay particular attention and shine a spotlight, as you mentioned, on the police officers that were lost. And we've invited Chief Standridge to be the keynote speaker at this year's event. So we hope that our, both our fellow employees and citizens can come and join us that morning as we remember this 23rd anniversary.
And where will it be?
On the front steps of City Hall, 8:40 a.m., September 11th, which is a Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you again. Whereas September is recognized as Suicide Awareness Month to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. And whereas National Suicide Prevention Week begins with World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th, a moment in time in which the public is asked to become aware of this leading cause of death and inspire more and more people to learn how they can play a role in their communities to help save lives. And whereas according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, the Center for Disease Control, CDC, and the National Institute of Mental Health, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 14, and the third leading cause of death among people aged 15 to 24 in the US, noting that 46% of people who die by suicide had a diagnosed mental health condition. And whereas according to NAMI, CDC, and NIMH, the prevalence of serious thoughts of suicide greatly impacts our youth in the US, specifically 11.3% of young adults aged 18 to 25, and 18.8% of high school students, and 45% of LGBTQ youth in the United States. And whereas the City of San Marcos supports the Core Four Partnership, which includes the City of San Marcos, Hayes County, San Marcos Independent School District, and Texas State University, plus the SMTX Mental Health Coalition and its members who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas community organizations like Senecor Foundation, Greater San Marcos Youth Council, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, NAMI Central Texas, Communities and Schools of Central Texas, Hill Country Mental Health and Development Disability Centers, along with other organizations and local mental health providers, serve on the front lines and see the impact of suicide and work to reduce the stigma, provide resources, support, and provide education to those in the City of San Marcos. And whereas we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education by actively participating in mental health first aid training, assist suicide prevention training, and other opportunities to increase education and awareness in the City of San Marcos. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby declare September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month, and do hereby call upon all the people of San Marcos to recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Thank y'all. There's a lot of folks who are working on this serious, serious, serious topic, and I thank every organization that does, because it's incredibly important, as y'all know, because y'all do this.
Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Cristal Lopez. I'm the Youth Services Director at Community Action, Inc. of Central Texas, and I facilitate the Core Four Partnership. I'm incredibly thankful for the city, for the mayor, and for the city manager and their office, and for all of the Core Four partners, including the city, the county, the school district, and the university. Our partnership is so unique in the work that we're doing collaboratively in the community, not just activating in our individual spaces and our silos, but really trying to bring down those barriers and have these conversations around our youth and young adults. And that work can't be done without the support of the Core Four, so we're so incredibly thankful that we are trying to put action behind words, right? Proclamations are nice, but what does it mean to actually take mental health seriously? What does it mean to education and awareness, and how do we put that into action in our daily lives? We ask for empathy, for kindness, and to really apply that in your daily life, in your work life, in your relationships, within your family, friendships, all of the above. Unfortunately, suicide or even mental health, that does not discriminate, right? That's not, it does not matter where you come from, your socioeconomic status. And so I think if we all come from a place of compassion and empathy, we can hopefully build a stronger tomorrow for our community, and I think that starts with our youth, investing in our youth and creating those spaces where we can have those conversations and provide resources and support. And this effort is not done or without the work of community partners, so we're so thankful for the wonderful community that we have here in San Marcos. So thank you so much.
We do have a caring community in San Marcos, Texas. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]